Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular Board of Selection meeting for Kent, Connecticut. Board Select meeting, excuse me, for Kent, Connecticut, September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, now six thirty P M. Um, with all, um, rise for the political allegiance.
What do we need to define of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and our agenda is to the agenda. I have one, um, add, and that's the after-public comment will be an executive session. Uh, executive discussion, the position of Assessor's Assistant. That's right. Assistant. And coming to, on the executive session, we'll invite people into that. That'll be after public com- after public comment at the end of the main order business.
Okay, um, I'd like to amend the agenda to be under new business, um, a draft social media policy.
Draft social media policy?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Just get us started, you know, hopefully. Approved in a lot of their thoughts.
Okay. Alright, that's a little longer, I move.
Bye.
Bye.
Shall we second that? I missed that.
I'll say it.
It's okay.
Yes. We made a motion.
Oh, I made the motion.
Yeah, you can say that. Also, I'll say that. Just kidding.
I made a motion.
You know that about your game.
I think you made the motion already.
Uh, he doesn't know, he said I did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she made the motion to him.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. One second, so we have one second and then we all. For favor. Okay, um, anything else? Good, okay. Alright, um, let's move to number four, that approval of minutes, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The regular meeting, or September sixteenth, twenty eight, or special meeting. A very minor, uh, edit for that, so August twenty eighth, approve amend agenda. Says Little Worthington made the flowing motion.
Oh.
Probably following. It is flowing, it's flowing, so that's the only one.
That's the only thing I said too.
Very much. Okay, alright, great, um, anything else? And, oh, can send the agenda for, uh, for, send approval for both August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, regular board select meeting as amended. And then September sixteen, twenty twenty four, special Board of Selection meeting. Second.
Okay.
Alright, a discussion if not, all in favor?
Bye.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, the only correspondence I had in this here is a letter from Region One, but it's really not directed to us directly, but I want to include that. It's part of mine, yes, uh, selecting report, so. Can discuss it there, it will need to be read in, well, it's in the minutes, but we don't need to read it into the minutes. But it was through the community, that kind of process, so. Any public comment on agenda items? Okay, great, thank you, hearing none, we'll move to the next, which will be, uh, tax refunds. We have two, two tax refund funds. Well, speaking, did never get any, the other one, okay, there were two tax refund in here. I think one was request for repayment refund of tax for Mr. Jeffrey Berry, twenty seven seventy, twenty seven dollars and seventy cents, excuse me. And one was for Allied Financial, uh, vault trust, two forty eight, twenty.
I'll make a motion that we approve the tax refund, that's, that's it.
I will sign the motion. Alright, discussion, moving on to the. People, yes, alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, then we, we go to our, uh, tertiary's report, which we have submitted, um. Our, as a mother visiting issue, I think we should apologize for that, but she put one in. She wanted to, um, bring the attention, it will be in the, um, minutes. Uh, the dispersment for the roofs, dispersment for the, uh, uh, Kent Altar Fire Department and for the Kent Formal Housing, uh, C D B G grant. So, um, those are the big ones right now, in the, in the first quarter, there's not a lot of activities, since people are just ramping up most of, of the buying. And spending, we know, comes into the second and third quarters, so, um, uh, she did say that, that they're finalizing, they're finalizing by liquids for the audit. So we're moving way ahead, this guy doing it last year was, was certainly the honest for, yes. Um, exactly, exactly. And the, um, so that's actually pretty good, and that goes to the last comment on the sheet, which is waiting on information from Kent Center School regarding section seven. Public Act twenty four, twenty, forty five, excuse me, and possibleified twenty four transfer of one forty four thousand sixty. That amount is two percent of the expended budget. Is now allowable by the state to be put into a special non-laxing fund by the school. But as administered by the school, approved by the school, and to the town, as it had in the past. I did not hear any, we did not hear any, any information. They may have voted, if they haven't told Barbara, so.
So weird.
I didn't see that, I didn't see the vote on it, but, um. You thought you saw some?
I did, at least on agenda.
Yeah, the jet, they moved the meeting, and, uh, but, but they may have, had put on, they just have their contact, they still have a little bit of time, but not much. Be honest with you, for us to do that, is once we get. The audit, when we're done, more money won't be transferred. Um, at that point, but they still have time, so. Um, anyway, that's the other thing we're looking for, uh, as you saw, the other credit card policy seems to be doing well, and, and his bi-weekly payroll transition seems to be doing well, and. How could you try to what happens?
Some of the credit cards are, are.
Oh, gosh, um.
Are they every person or?
Not everyone, they're the ones that make normal, like, um. You know, and I know, I know it's, um, Parker Reg, yeah, Social Services, um, you know, it's our U of course. Reg, of course, Public Works, um, but Assessor is not, they don't make anything, Tax Factor is not, uh, Town Clerk. I think she got one, yes, I just signed it for Darlene, so yeah, I know she has one, and then I don't believe there's one down in menus. So there's like five, six or seven right now, we wanted to keep it under ten, which is what we saw, we managed, and so far.
The school, the school has.
Oh, the school, yeah, the school has one for their, okay, yeah, Michelle, that's right, we did, thank you. Um, yeah, the whole point of that is that to manage your budget, be able to use it, and use credit cards, so going back to purchase orders, we still do some, and, and for local vendors. But, um, it also allows them to be able to be more, uh, efficient with their own spending, and keeps them accountable, and we get, we get the reports every month. That also helps, but we don't get the receipts sometimes, and, yeah, whatever, it helps a little bit. Um, you know, so, because it is a, one of those, uh. Cards give you a, okay, points, whatever, not cash points to it, as we said, that we could use those points to do special things for, um, gift cards, or other things to holidays, or, or different. Different items we don't need in town that we can get, you know, things like that, that, you know, you could use points for that as well, so. Um, so that's it, um, the only other thing I, I did, was on a report, and that's my fault for not remembering, we have task to do it, is that. Um, our red share voters, uh, received the two thousand dollar basic, um, grant from the state for this fiscal year, voting. Um, that was a million dollars that they divided up, went by, by population, of course, in the small, but so we got a minimum of two thousand, we did initially two thousand. There's also a grant, um, applied for, um, by the, um, by Theresa, specifically by a, um, nonprofit, non-governmental, um. Organization that have, by the, five thousand dollars. Um, initially, it was put in for personnel movement and so on, but we already have personnel, um, funding, um, in our budget, and we went through that pretty thoroughly. So we went back and had a meeting, uh, with R O Bs and, and, uh, Barbara and myself, um, just the other day, and, and we discussed. Where's a better way to put that, and as you know, we were looking at cameras, right, and, and that one is going to be moved, uh, that you mentioned that the other day. Uh, we are going to put another one outside, so, um, what we were able to do is take the seven thousand dollars, uh, and apply it towards our camera. Which is around twelve to thirteen dollars in that range right now, there's still going to be some, um, adjustments, because we didn't get the camera that I wanted on the outside of the back door for election monitoring, and then. The, um, um, the walkway, and then the, you know, driveway apartment area, or things like that, so. Um, so we thought that was a great one, we all agreed that was a better way to put it than personnel, we already had, we did not have the money in for the, the cameras. Um, we needed one, there's a requirement for one on the ballot box, or the drop box, or the, um, absentee ballot.
Mm-hmm.
We're heading to, uh. That's what we're going to do. That's your show, um, but we are in, uh, during camera, we did put out front, and that, pardon, that seven thousand dollars will help us get the upgrade. And we're trading in a camera, we're getting another camera, swapping, moving a camera, um, and things like that, so. Um, it still costs us a few thousand dollars out of our contingency of office operating funds, but, um, we'll be able to get all the cameras ready and get it installed now. Before the rush that you were talking before, and before any additional costs go on about it, so.
And that camera, the, for the ballot box, is it basically so you can see the person and see the, like, a license plate?
License plate, exactly, yeah, we, uh, facial recognition, because people have to just drop up and do anything, they could be walking up, and it's just also low light. Um, it's lit, so there is light at night, and so on, so it's not as expensive trying to, in, in infrared, low light, uh, I R cameras not going to do anything for being able to find, find detail of individual spaces. So, uh, we put it in for, uh, the, it is, it is at the, uh, end of the parking lot, on the west side of the park, and here, that does have light, lighting, so we can, we can monitor. And it's, um, we have a hotel location on that one, because, you know, obviously, it only does and so on, so we, but we do, uh, we do have a permit coverage on it. So, so we're in compliance.
And we have to keep the recordings for a certain period of time? Yeah.
No, no. Right now, it's, it's, there's an interim amount of time, because if anything goes back, it's declared, any issues back, we have to know, it's not like thirty, twenty four hours, thirty days, hundred days, right now, it's interim amount of time. Which means we will have to find storage space, but that's part of our projected upgrade, with everything in, in town, you're anyway, with, with, uh, uh, the C N, and everything, and, uh, Twitter, or anything about it. Anyway, so that, but we did, that's the, the other part of, of what we did with Barbara to, to move money, and she had put in the, um, the responses to the organization, what are you going to do with money? So she administered those grants. We did, you know, um, make sure that we re- reiterated that in our, our policy manual as well, it says that if you are interested in getting a grant, and, you know, we are, that it needs to come to, we set the minimum in the territory, so we know where and for. And, uh, so. This one is.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we just reminded people, but we're encouraging people to look for grants, find them, something can be helpful to the town and our needs, and, you know, look for it, so. So that was the other part of, of, of territory report, so.
Excellent.
Good, thank you.
It's nice when money's come in.
Isn't it? Yeah, no, exactly, I have upset all the, it's gone, so, okay, uh, new business then, um, we moved to the appointment of Jane Hanley. Um, the Cemetery Committee met the other day, and they wanted to make sure, um, that we had appointed Jane, so there's a confusion whether she'd actually been appointed formally by us, I could not find that in any of our minutes. Um, that we had heard that from the committee, so we, we talked, we, Laura Shiselman, the committee, um, chair, uh, put that in, so. Entertained a motion to appoint Jane Hanley to the expiring two-year Cemetery Committee, alternate position, with a term date of three twenty twenty six.
Sound.
Second, okay? Okay.
Hi.
Discussion, yeah, that, that, he seemed to be doing well with the future, nice work. That was, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, I just came up with this, you know, I was trying to think of, sort of in light of the, uh. What we went through with his signs.
Was that?
Yeah. And I just thought we could talk about it, and then, you know, maybe vote on it next month, you know?
Well, like I said, I've been working with Darlene on, on some of this, and we have a couple of C C M inputs to that, I'm looking at the towns, not a huge one, we don't need one, it's twelve pages long, we still had, but something, it fits us, so, um.
Well, I tried to tailor this to Kent, I said.
Right, right, exactly.
You know, like, for instance, the reason this also came up for me is because the broadband committee wants to have a Facebook and Instagram page. So it's like, okay, how do we do that, I don't even know if a group wants to. It's, it would seem logical that they would notify you and the town clerk. And then I think it's important that more than one person has, has the ability to log in.
Sure.
Um, so that person leaves, and somebody's got to be able to get into it.
Yeah, right.
Um. So, um, and then, you know, when I had, when I had posted something, I. Joyce had reached out to me, when I posted something about the transfer station, doing my thing at the farmer's market, Joyce had reached out to me, and I was like, okay. Um, saying that we should, you know, that information should really be shared with other people, so that's why I put this on, that you can share with the town's Facebook page. Or, um, convey to people who are the social media administrators, and I don't even know who that is, I guess, that's probably Darlene.
That's right, yeah.
Um. And then, you know, share it with the town's website, and then, you know, a lot of the information gets out through the Facebook group, the town's Facebook group. So I don't know if that's enough information about it, but I think we need to acknowledge that's a way of sharing information. And the thing is, is they have a restriction where you can't share from a page, you have to actually share from an individual's account. Um.
Definitely.
And then I thought, you know, for the ones that are already established, it kind of makes sense to give them, whether or not this is the right date, but just give them a deadline of, you know, shared with Darlene. And then, and there's this trying to deal with the, you know, individuals' costs.
Right.
I don't know if this is the right wording, but this is what I came up with.
Yeah, that.
Um, town officials, employees, and members of commissions and committees will refrain from posting and commenting on social media as representatives of the town of Kent. Without first getting clearance and approval in general, or for specific messages from their supervisor or commission slash committee. Posting as individuals should be identified as such. And then town of, I also thought it might make sense to put in a tagline of the town of Kent encourages all official communication directed to departments, commissions, or committees. Comments on social media are not official.
Yeah.
Because people expected us to comment, like, we're not going to do that.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, this is, this is, this is really, um, some things we're actually looking at, um, part of what we're doing is, is Randy, without vacation, or, or Randy Bell, our lawyer. Uh, want him to review and make sure we're in compliance, because there is an issue, not an issue per se, but there's questions regarding, as a individual, can you comment, even though you're on board? It's free court, just in Litkey versus. Right, I think it was, um, said, yes, but, you know, and they left it open, and they actually said, um, they should not, they sent it back to lower court to, to deal with this.
It's unresolved.
Unresolved, but basically, they said, you know, that's, there is a self, or I think first member right to be able to comment, as long as you're not, you're not doing unofficial, uh, capacity, unofficial site, same, using your official term, and so on. So it's, it gets into, you know, what, and that's the part that the lower court, I think the circuit couldn't figure out. Because they, you know, they know somebody's a member, like our town, we know people on numbers, is that enough to, for, they're just really familiar with the topic, which is part of what was going on. Right, a little bit of that, anyway, and then it was other stuff, and then, so, um, I think it, I think it's really good to point that out, and I think that's a good point here. Um, I think we need to, you know, probably tighten up some of that, that, that language and so on, but, um, so I'd love to take this and use it with some of what I put together, and get it to Randy, come back and get, we can have something, I think, before we have our next meeting. At least for us to look at, and then even post for comments or something, if one, two, or something, with our department, and, and the commission, and so on, so we get some feedback, we can try to do that, so, yeah, that's good, that's. Thank you, this is. Yeah, it's very clear, and, uh. And we need to work on it, absolutely. So maybe by the next.
Yeah.
By the next time, we'll have something. Yeah, yeah. Okay, just keep popping up on my thing, and I keep, and that was something, correct? Well, thank you, okay, so, great, this is, um, this is what we're just going to table this. And your info, yeah, Ray's got to talk about it, so. That comes vacation to Italy for the first time ever.
Oh, wow.
Okay, thanks, alright, um, uh, old business, we're at Swift House now. So you received the, uh, the, the reports, for example, thank you, uh, so we got it on September eleventh, uh, and, uh, and that is in here, and this is what we had talked about at our, at our last meeting. And, uh, Zan, uh, included, uh, a lot of the organization's, um, input at the end of the report here, and, um. Again, Zan, thank you for, for doing all this, this was a big job, and, uh, and you got it.
Most particularly part of the summertime, because chasing people that were not around.
Yeah, so, so.
It was very hard, very, very hard.
And I want to thank the rest of the committee as well, uh, who, uh, you know, they took the time out to, to meet at the Swift House and the last meeting on Zoom. Uh, so, um, so this is, you know, this, this is the recommendation for us to consider, um, and I think just in general, uh, you know, there are groups that are interested in using. The building, um, those listed here have used it before, uh, it seems, I know we have ideas, well, not all, but, but nothing. And, um, and we have, uh, you know, we have, we have a vision of how the town is going to use it, uh, by putting a, a department in there, so I don't know how. Yeah, I don't know how that will, will work exactly, I mean, we did talk about as a committee, uh, of using the, the front room there for a lot of these groups, knowing that. One or more other rooms, especially the one room right now, uh, we have, we have a plan for an office, so, um. So this is for, this is for you to see, and, uh, we can, we can talk about it now, um, we can continue the conversation, uh, what do you think? I mean, like, it's, it is pretty thorough, it's pretty straightforward, I mean, it's what we've been discussing for a long time, I think this is great to take into consideration, I think. I think it's hard to, well, I think we're, I'm okay with accepting this, this submitted, for us to consider, and then, you know, actually moving on to some of the other things that. Yeah. You know, I think our, our part, ourselves to be where we're going to go with this, with building itself, which is the grants that others. And so you're good. Yeah, I know, I, yeah, I know, it's, it's a good document, it is very thorough, I know you put a lot of work into it, everybody did, um, I appreciate you running it up to the office and, and the, you know, it's a good job, so, um. Yeah, uh, you know, and I'll look to help, you know, and probably accepting as a board, uh, as a report, um. We, Swift House, that was number.
Do you have any questions about any of the information there?
No, not really, um, just. I didn't know, you guys speak, wish you'd have come in.
Can, can you just remind me about what was said, if we were to use the second, of use of the second floor and accessible? I thought we had to have a, another stair case, if we have to use the second floor, does that?
I think that's for residential use.
So it's only residential use?
Okay. I mean, there is.
Residential.
There is a second stairway, that's not.
It's not those of eyes, it's the those of the eye, but, um, I don't know, that's, that was one thing, it's like.
Doesn't need storage right now, requiring any change to the stairwell.
Exactly.
Right, so, any additional, we have to, we can go back and relook at what we have to do, if it's handrails, I mean, there's some other things that.
But even like using that big room as an office, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that, in terms of, without doing anything to the stairway.
It's, this is back to the accessibility piece, actually, if it's a municipal, uh, it's a project or a municipal, um, use or a mixed use, then, yeah, it gets in the ADA kind of question about it, so. But, yeah.
Just something to think about.
Oh, absolutely, no, it's, you know, we've.
Move forward plans.
We talked about, so do you want to talk about the grant development?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that, um, could we need to vote on accepting, we should probably vote on accepting, because it's in the record.
Yeah, no.
I'll make a motion to accept, we thanks the, uh, report on this, with us.
I will second that, great. Any more discussion, all in favor?
Bye. Bye.
I with that.
Okay, so, yeah, I talked with, um. So, I sent you guys the links, and then Barbara came back saying that she thought it was a matching grant, based on the wording she was reading, so then I called, and actually, um. Left a message, and then Mary Dunn and I connected later, and Mary confirmed, she's the certified local government grants coordinator for SHPO. And she confirmed that this particular type of grant is not, um, a matching grant, so we could get up to twenty thousand dollars without having to match it. And, um. The, the process, she said she would speak with Marina Wazinski to get an estimate of how much she thought, um, an architectural historian would charge. Um, for, since Marina's entered into the building, um, and understands it, uh, its history. And she basically told me there was a, a range of maybe some five thousand, some over twenty thousand, so, depends on how complicated the building is, I guess. So the process is, we'd have to fill out the grant application, and the architectural historian is not going to help us do that, so somebody would have to do that here, for the town. Um, we'd have to have a project narrative, um, and we'd have to have a budget narrative, and.
You know, a project budget.
So it's not, it's not real tough, but some person would have to, have to do these, these kinds of things, and then we, as a board, would have to do a certified resolution. Um. That we're applying for this.
Yes.
That's, that's. I have a question.
Hmm.
My understanding was that there's a specific grant to hire an architectural historian to write the narrative for the, um, National Register nomination.
It's basically to apply for the National Registry.
Right.
That's what the grant's for, and that's, you know, the historian if you want.
What about, so I'm a little bit confused about the historical budget.
You have to put together a budget of.
For what?
For applying for the National Registry, which would basically be probably a hundred percent this, this, uh, architectural historian.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, I don't know, this.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It's just their process, you know, they have, they have these.
It's not a budget for any work to be done on the building, it's just a budget for the.
For this particular.
Okay. That was my question.
Mm-hmm. And she's, she also, uh, said that she's willing to review any project. Prior to submission and get feedback, which I thought was really nice.
And everything that I have heard in my conversations with SHPO too, is that. Their architectural colleagues get those applications, that, that's so much.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that was, that was actually a little disturbing, she said that they're now working, like, if we submitted it tomorrow, it wouldn't get dealt with until February. And that is going to be the ultimate last time they're going to award any money, because they've already allocated, they've already got people in line, so.
It wasn't once in months, it's, it changes, you know.
Yes, but she's saying.
The month about that word.
Well, yeah, I mean, she's saying that they've already got people lined up, and that if we submit now.
So beginning, yeah, you want to, yeah, if you would have told them.
We wouldn't know, well, we, they would help us.
Oh, sure, no, that's right, but it wouldn't come before then. To, to start.
Yeah, no, we're not going to get an answer.
Okay. Uh. Yeah, I don't, I don't have much this, this bad news, and meetings and so on, and I'm glad we had a chance to have SHPO, and I appreciate their letter, that was nice. I guess I'm going to kick up that letter, um, I just, the concern I have going into this, um, just from a management side, the side of the grant, so, that we have, and this is a steep piece to it. Um, talked to Maria Horn on Friday, and he's still not received, um, the, um. Her, uh, bonding committee had received the state's Steve Grant, uh, application, or the information on it, so they're not ready to, to go in, she's not sure she's going to keep this informed. Um, I don't, what I don't want is one, one grant to muck you up another grant and get in the way of it, if we're going to go with it, with the grant, the state, or the SHPO grant, and then the National Register replacement grant. I don't want to get steep money caught up with determination, it may take a long time for, uh, us to get determination, and then, we know, with, with determination, if it's, if it's accepted, National Storage Site. There's restrictions and different work, you know, issues with how, um, any work is done in the building, I just don't want, I, I watch it with the, with the. Well, we said, I watched it with the sidewalks that we end up pushing and having some part outland on grant funding, that we almost lost grant funding.
Well, yeah, I think these are two separate things.
I don't see, you know, I, I, no, I, I don't, it's, it's one, it's the other, if, if we're going to go national historic places, and there's going to be a designation, potential designation. And now it changes what we're going to plan to do with the steep grant, which was to look at, for, um, uh, social services and so on, and they say, no, you can't do that with the wall, you can't do that with this, then that puts that. Uh, that, that's deep grade at risk as well, and I don't think, so, what I'm recommending is that we hold off, we retract the, we go ahead with, if you want to go ahead with the, 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 the SHPO grant and the, and the federal grant. Uh, or the money for the architecture and the grant, is that we delay the steep, we can, and so, um, delay that and put that back into the community house, which was the other issue. And then wait until we see how everything works out with federal, um, acknowledgement, uh, federal restriction, but, you know, if we're going to accept. The restrictions that might come with that designation, or what we can and can't do, I don't want to go off the steep grant, and I don't want to be in the middle of the steep grant, have to come back and say, no, that now has bolxed the. Bollocks the historical grant because you changed, uh, you know, an exterior door or a, or you put something. Um, that your architects for the function of social services says, you know, it worked for that, but it doesn't work for, you know, for, you know, for. Registered historic place or whatever, I'm just, I'm worried that we're going to run into one of those, and I don't think it's. If, there's, certainly if there's. A recognition and that's approved and so on, that will give us opportunities to, uh, just look for funding, but even come back with additional. Steep grant or something to actually work that. In the confines of what we find was a, a national historic designation and. And what we could and can't do, and they say, oh, change this, keep, you know, you must maintain the exterior, you must do something whether to retain the historical relevance. Uh, of the, uh, the property, uh, I just think, again, I don't know, it may, it may, we, we don't even get Steve pants this year, uh, you know, that's a possibility.
That's always a huge question, is, is that a possibility at that point?
Well, here we are, three months, you never know what the state, they're going to come back and, and legislation, they may say, okay, we need to get Steve pants out, because it's, it's not just cats asking, there's a lot of cats that are asking for. Especially if it's a legislation, move legislators, move the, the number from five hundred to a million, up to a million. It doesn't, it's a guarantee, but it could be up to, so. We're going, hey, this is great, now I can do, you know, project, I can do something I want to do, and we haven't heard, um, but I just. I mean, it's, okay, and if we want to, we as a board will decide, um, to move forward with the, I just. Prefer that we actually keep our options open on the steep grant, we could revisit, uh, you know, but, um, I would just. Give us the, to give us the option, right, for now, retract the, uh, this, the, uh. Our, our, our motion to move steep grant towards the, you know, the social services piece of the, uh, of the.
So do we clear the steep grant, we're, we're going up to half a million.
We said, we said the time, you could take on, there's, I'm trying to do this change, let me put that way, but.
This grant you're talking about, the maximum is twenty, twenty thousand.
And it's only for this, it's only for applying to the National Registry, it can't be used for anything else.
So is this a one-time thing with this, like, we can't do this next year or the year?
Or we could do this next year, but I mean, if we want to get into this pot of money. For the twenty four, twenty five, then.
Okay, but, but it's not closed forever, so, so it's, okay, so five hundred thousand dollars versus twenty thousand dollars.
Function versus potential function versus. It's, I mean, it, it, it gives a providence in the building, it gives us the historical relevance to town.
Yes.
You know, it does all things like that, which makes, it moves into a different, um, you know, uh, recognition point of the, of the building itself and maybe the, the properties and so on.
So if we, let's take a, let's take a.
I just.
Okay.
Have you, I see you've printed something out, have you read that the National Registry prohibits? Changes to the exterior of the building? Have you read that? That's my question. Is that why you're bringing this up?
Yeah, well, that's not really, when it looks at, not when it restricts what you do, but if you change the nature of it, and if we. You know, and right now, we're not looking to change too much of it, uh, we, you know, we're not going to, we're the, the thought, it was not too good, as I, as I even said that. Not going in the front door, but, or, you know, certainly the front door, but certainly not the side, either we're looking at the back, so maybe that wouldn't be a thing, but I don't know. What else would be done if we looked at putting the. Which we had talked about, um, the food back in the back and reinforcing that back area or expanding it, um, if that would change anything, or maybe not, maybe it's only at the front and size, I don't know. I don't know what any, you know, uh, historical, um, architect would look at as, as far as us modifying it for another function.
I think you're, I've had conversations with Marina Wazinski about that topic if, if I could. Add some information.
In that topic in, like, in terms of how does it impact, they're much, much concerned with the exterior of the building.
Yes. And the interior, she mentioned in her letter specifically, you know, the. Yeah, the. The millwork inside, the, um, architectural details of the fireplaces and so forth. Um, as far as use is concerned, we talked about the use, like, she's aware that. The town would like to put a department in there and offices, she's given her opinion on the ADA access as in terms of. The, the appearance and also, you know, the relative cost and difficulty of achieving that. And, um, part of what's. Um. Indicated in the historic, uh, uh, application for landmark status. If, for, they would like you, she would provide a list of architects. Histor, who've worked in historic buildings.
That you'd be aware of.
You know, they work hand in hand and they're aware of what the needs, um, restrictions are, but there really aren't restrictions about use. They just. And, and they're much more concerned about the exterior.
But what he's, what Marty is concerned about is that they would be trying to dictate. What the exterior is going to look like.
Well, we.
I'm not sure that that actually is the way the, the National Register works, I mean.
Were you thinking about changing the exterior at all? I didn't understand that ever.
Well, I mean, even like the ADA access could change the exterior.
She has a written opinion that.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying potentially it could change. Depending on. You know.
And that's, that's SHPO's too, that's not the federal, it's SHPO, and SHPO took forever to act on it, and, and in their letter, they talk about the exterior thing, so if we had to change trim to. To, to do something interior to it, to, you know, like, uh, update electrical or something like that, I don't want that to be, you know, a recommendation from SHPO. And then we change it and it's like, well, you talked about, you know, your, your true work inside, and I see that's changed. Or something, uh, you know, some of the details.
I'm not sure that's going to.
I think like if we were going to change the windows, maybe they would dictate, we can only use this one specific kind of more costly windows or siding, like we couldn't maybe put. Uh, a manmade material versus a natural wood siding or go, I think, I, I don't want to say.
I'm not sure that that's the role of the National Registry.
But if the building doesn't have those things on the exterior, does it still qualify to get on the list, is, I, I think where Marty's going, and that if. You know, if we're in the process and we have all the siding off the building, because we're going to go and put a hardened plank or some other manmade material. And then they say, oh, well, you just took away the historical component of it. Um, you know, Marty doesn't want to get in that situation, I think is what you're trying to.
Well, if it needs to be redone.
I, I, I'm not disputing that, but I definitely, we want to be in the middle of doing it, and then all of a sudden they say, well, now it doesn't qualify for the historical, um, registry because you've done. Something that prohibited it from being done now, yes.
It's basically not, you know, the, the opportunity or potential for running up one grant into the other, trying to do one thing with one grant, running it into the other.
Yeah, I, I understand your concern, but I'm just, I think you may be inserting concerns where there, it's not going to happen.
Especially if you use one of their proof to start architects, who knows. You know, what the.
They're just writing a report about whether or not it's historically significant.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's what they're writing a, a report about. You know, so, I mean, that's not going to dictate the design.
Yeah, it's not going to dictate the design.
So that's a whole other process.
Yeah, but I, I still think that if we got into the middle of having to do some. Actual construction work, uh, in a steep grant situation, and we change something that would be. Considered in the, by a historical architect, as a significant piece to it or change to it or flooring, or we talk about timbering and, and other, you know, interior elements, I, you know, would hate to. To think we've done something to expand a room or, or do something else that would interfere, all I'm asking is, if we're recommending discussions, is that if we go with. The grant. That we hold off right now on the steep, and, and we'll see how it goes with the steep, that we consider looking at that, we don't want to be considered tonight, but I didn't want to bring that up. Because steep's kind of, you know, we're not here actually pushing the steep grant right now, but I know as the board has voted to do the steep, I just. You know, just we have to get the change.
The problem is, let's say the steep grant does not happen this year, there have been years when there's been no seed grant. Um, this, the National Registry would make us eligible for grants through SHPO. If we don't have that, it'll be harder to get them.
But how hard are those grants to get?
They're hard, they're competitive, but at least it's just the state of Connecticut, it's not like you're trying to get a national grant. So.
Is there a cutoff date where? Where there's no steep grants, like, does there like a, you know, there's five and three days out?
Right, there's about nothing.
Right, no cut off date, so, so this could linger through.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, if, if it's actually at that point, then there's probably going to be some determination that, oh, we can't do it, this year, or it's going to be a, you got two and a half weeks to get your project.
Right, right.
You know, that's what happens with the state, unfortunately. Uh, and I don't want us to, I mean, listen, you know, I know everybody's worked on this, I'm not, I think. Personally, I think we should take it to the town and ask them, ask the town, bring it to a discussion anyway, but I'm not going to, in the way of, of looking at the, uh, uh, grant process. I'm not, you know, I'm not to sit here and say, well, I, I, cause I don't like it, I think we should, I think we should consider. This big grant, you know, to, to get the, I guess you had a very good argument, we've got a letter here, finally got the shipboard to stand up, so. And, and, you know, we've worked hard, you've worked hard, you know, it's, and we're hard, I recognize that, so, I'm, I just don't want to end up having to, you know. Look at a steep grant that I'm going to have to go, okay, you got to hold on, when we can actually start it or get it going, because the architect may say, hey, well, you know, they may come and say, and to keep. The integrity of this, I, I don't know, I'm not, you're right, I expect.
I don't think they're going to do that, I think that report's going to be about why this building is significant. The fact that there are three buildings that were put together, you know, it's going to be about historic stuff. So, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to dismantle the building, I mean, if we're going to dismantle the whole building, then maybe it would be in con, in conflict, conflict with it, but.
No, 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 but.
I just can't imagine, I mean, the buildings that I know that are on the historic registry, you know, seven bars, we're into a hotel, I mean. They got on the registry early on in the seventies. So it's like. You know, it's, it's all about the history of the building.
So with steep, we're just waiting, we may not even get an opportunity this year, with this National Registry, we can, ooh, we could do something.
Yeah, I mean, that's it, that's what I'm saying.
So, 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 uh, uh, in large degree, it's, it's, we, we either, we either wait or we move on some night.
Right, well, that's, that's what I'm saying, I'm just talking about it, I'm just, you know, bringing it up, like you said, we don't have to make decisions on steep grant because we haven't got that to. I mean, you give me, you give me the opportunity to, to negotiate as we get it, but we're not there yet, so, um, but I just, I just wanted to throw that in there, because I don't want. One becoming conflict to the other.
No, that was in my, for two.
Yeah, yeah, I wish that you're going to be in conflict, Marty, I really don't, I think they're two different things. And I can't see how the National Registry is going to prevent. The work being done on the, on the steep, on the, a swift house through a steep grant, I just don't see how that can.
Well, I just see how a steep grant changing the tenor, the nature of, of the building itself takes it out of the, a historical significance anymore and just another whole building.
No, no, because that's the history of it, it's the history that gives it the historical significance. I mean, its current use isn't going to impact that.
They know we're planning to put ADA access.
Yeah.
And that's a part of. The whole understanding with SHPO.
Right, and, and that's done in a lot of historic buildings.
If you don't apply for a C grant this year, what does that do about reopening the building and putting it in use, um. You know, alleviating the crowded in town hall and. Making it available for civic organizations.
And, and, and again, that is a question, as we get going with, with the report that they just accepted is, um. What these people pay fees for, which town has to pick up for civic organization, which, which we decide are worthy enough to go, which, which ones can or shouldn't, unable to. I mean, that's part where I think town needs to weigh in on how they want to, that's, you know, and so that's another step, I think. Um, yeah, I mean. I, I just, I do worry about the secret, I do worry about what, what's happened with Steve, you know, I just looked at historical buildings that I've built and heard it in, how they have to keep a certain facade or, or tenor, whatever. Or use, I mean, or, or open up for visits or something that I, you know, I don't know.
But that's not necessarily what this is all about, you know, the, the National Register is not about that.
Right.
That's like, if you have a, like, we have a historic district commission, we have a district.
Right.
That's, yeah, when buildings are in a district. That's the kind of restrictions that you see, like, you're not supposed to change the outside of the building when you live in a historic district without going through the process. Of presenting your plan and that. But we don't have that with, with Swift House, that's not in a district.
Identify, evaluate and protect, so identify and evaluate again is to protect peace that. You know, make it, so, um, whatever, um, yeah, what do you guys want to do?
I don't know, why? I don't want to, I, I think it's going to help.
So, we keep the task force open to manage the application? Definitely. It's a lot of work on the town right now. I mean, it's only Barbara, I mean, she's certainly be there to help, but, but. And we talked about saying the task force is done, it's what we asked it to do, that's a report we've received, um.
So that charge is complete?
Yeah, yeah.
That's in our reports, what's, what's the next step?
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, so what you're suggesting is that maybe there is another step. For the task force to, to continue this process.
Yeah, work through the grant, yeah.
And you'd be okay with that?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, if, if, you know, if we're going to vote to go that way, then yeah, I think we have to do it with the, with the task force. Working to do that. How's your energy level? Still there? I'm sure, I'm sure, listen, you've been an advocate, you've been an advocate, I appreciate it.
I'm about my station. So I choose to get the building, you know, that, that's less, we can get some ADA access, that makes it difficult.
What do you think?
What about if, um, Glenn and I worked on the brand together, would that be? Okay?
Okay.
I don't think this is a lot of work, I would feel.
Possibly not, yeah, I don't. Once you get the list of, we can work with and.
I mean, it's just working with SHPO.
Just another question, I just clarification, is, is SHPO then accepted Swift House into the state historical? Are you sure?
No, it's, it's, like, once you get the national, you definitely get.
So you just want of course.
Yeah.
But you don't look at.
You know, you. They are encouraging us to apply for Nashville, I think it's perfectly appropriate for this building. If you get Nashville, you automatically get state. If the application has been approved and presented, then, um. At, then I think you get onto the state register.
What if we fail, it doesn't make the national?
Then we're not going to have the million now.
It would be automatic, so it's not automatic.
What they, I, it's an internal.
I think that, that, that's a huge question, I have this entire process, if, if they're so excited about this house.
Yeah.
Why can't they just say yes now for the state, why do we have to even wait for the national?
Because it's their process, and their process is, they meet on an application for a building. And they go through and they approve it, and they decide to pass it on to the national. And it's in that process that. It's the same group of people have the meeting about the building, whatever it is. And while they're reviewing the application, the application is also the application for state.
Yeah.
So they don't want to do a separate process because of manpower and time and that, they're not going to look at state if we're applying for national. They're going to look at the whole process together, very confusing.
Yeah, because they have a timeframe, has anyone told us? How long we should wait?
No, they said get it in as soon as possible, because even if we turned it in, we're not going to get it dealt with, I was very.
That's, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's good. And you ready to grant?
I think we could get this done in like two or three weeks. It's going to be a lot of work. It's just a lot of small stuff.
We want to get it done quickly.
Yeah.
Clearly. Two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, I can write it right two weeks. Um, what do you think, what do you think?
I, I know you guys have the capability, I, I don't talk. I mean, yeah, of course, Marty, you know, you're, you're a great writer, I've always appreciated that, and, and, yeah, I'm sure you can.
So if we write the grant. Is there a role for the Swift House Task Force?
Anything we could do to be helpful?
I'd reach out.
Right, the other, the other thing.
At this point, we're moving past the, the.
So, yeah, so my, you know, do we need the force, I know Zan, you'll be, you'll be here talking with us, I know that, um, do we need the others, it's just. Uh, do we need the others? It's just my.
One other thing that we have outstanding that we've been working on is trying to prioritize the use of funds that are in the town budget now for repairs and maintenance, to prioritize those things. And we postponed that at the last meeting because we wanted to deal more with this report. But, um, if you still want us to help with that process.
So we did, we did that last fiscal, we got it to the end, now there's, there's this one. Yeah, it's within the Twitter. And we've got an assistant, somebody to do it.
I think you can do that.
We're open, sir. Okay, so, so in terms of that, we're okay for this year. Okay.
So, I mean, it would be nice to get some work scheduled for the spring.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
You can make a motion.
To point our two esteemed select persons, Lance Sanchez Worthington to be the coordinators for the application for the grant, uh, the architectural store home. Do you think we can get the.
Oh, the, um.
Yeah. It's a ship's journey, I'm planning it, but that's a different.
The planning and pre-development grant for historic destination reports.
There you go.
And concurrently, that will be the dissolution of the Swift House Task Force with thanks.
Do you have a separate motion? Is that okay? Okay, I'm on motion.
Okay, can we turn in our recommendations for the, um, repairs and maintenance, because we have, yeah. Have.
The capital to you, building capital.
All this work together anyway.
So that's motion. Seconded, okay. Discussion. Right, I'm favorite.
Hi.
Okay.
There's no media interviewers. Okay, um, now we move to turn two, which is the BFT, you know, the billing update. We saw, um, the, the piece that was submitted, um, by Jean with the progress, I won't take it. And answered any of the real questions we had, it just gives percentage, but there were other things that we're continuing to, to work with, and, uh, the last minute piece on, um, questions what we have that, that Barbara and I have, you guys have expressed numerous times since March, I believe, the first time we brought up March, I've worked. We're gonna, but, yeah, and, uh, and so we're still working on that. We did not meet, um, in September, which was the, the intent of our discussion in June was to meet again, you could not. Anytime, by heart, for that come up at times, like we get principles together. Um, I sent you notes too, I'm saying, then I guess if I am, right, so you guys were okay with your current funding? And as far as the change to the EMS staffing, um, contract that we had just signed, which we did discover was ongoing during our budget, you know, period, never discussed with us.
Right.
Or about that, so I said, then in that case, then I guess we're gonna stick with no additional changes to what we had allocated in the budget, just three hundred, twenty thousand dollars for that statement. There were also questions that we had, follow-up questions that we had, that came upon Barbara's, I think, all season, uh, that led, which was, um, I think it's, in place jump in association with, um, our work with High Watch and support High Watch with our EMS system, was what billing issues do we have, unpaid billing and, and files, or something like that, we have not had a good answer on that one. Uh, that was part of that I was hoping we would get, and didn't fully, wasn't covered in Jean's piece to us, you know, which was not in position, because she's not EMS director, uh, chief, which is my destiny. Um, we just turned this up tonight about five o'clock before eight, we had almost two. Was to, sorry, was to, um, finally find another date we could meet and bring these questions up again, which is only, just next, we to, we two, two weeks from today, five thirty. So we will have a lot, most of the work is part of like, opening up our EMS personnel, and they know what we're looking for. We have expressed that in numerous emails, numerous meetings, numerous phone conversations. So as I sent you an email back, um, when you had asked about what's the update, so I, I held out on it, I said I was gonna send a letter. Planning to, in, in draft. We were told that we would get some more information, that we would get more, uh, people to step in, and, uh, it did not happen. And the headset sent me the other email saying that I guess we're, we're pretty much done, we'll get a deal with it as we, as the board seats fit in, it is, yeah, as our treasurer too. There we go, people from the fire room, so let them jump in, um, and, uh, but we, as I said, we, we are going to regather, uh, the night and, and ask some more of these questions, do some more of the, the budget issues and so on.
Marty, just to clarify, you, you did ask them how many paramedic calls through NIML for
Part that we have.
Since twenty twenty-two, and they haven't given us that.
They did give that, they, they did give us the, the billing information, um, yeah, they did that, um, about two weeks ago. Barbara gave the information, yeah, so, yeah, if we didn't, so, yeah, I apologize, trying to make sure, okay, well, good, I think we did, so. Uh, but no, we did get that information about two weeks ago, I believe we got it. Yeah. Now, we got the, shared, I got the, the information, I shared, and how much money, you know, the town could receive from that, which is part of the, the question of that, I believe, was right.
Right, yeah, because we're paying a hundred and fifty cents a thousand dollars.
Right. I, I'll get there, I apologize, I'll make sure that that gets into the record from today, you'll have to dig it out. I think it can be Barbara. Initially.
And the other question is, um, that, so by this information that, that we did get, it doesn't look like there's, the paramedic actually ever goes to High Watch, which is surprising to me, and also, I don't know if you specifically asked about EMS, but, um, do they have a go there for fire calls? Because the money that they're giving is also about fires, all of EMS.
I don't know if the fire chief, Ken Legato, can answer that specific question, I'm sure they probably, if there's been a fire call, you guys have answered. I, I'm aware of any, but, um, I'm, I'm sure, I know we have in the past, but. Alan, you wanna, you pop in here for a few minutes?
Sure, um, again, I was just a little concerned about the, the comments about, um, you know, the information. We met, um, I believe it was in June, and, um, agreed that, uh, at the request of our treasurer, of Eric Epstein, um, that we would meet um, after the summer, and the, the target was September very clearly. Um, and so we started to, you know, work those dates out, and fortunately, we do have a date, like you said, down to the, uh, back and forth today, so thank you for, for that. And, um, so we have that, so we can start getting through the questions, you know, and, and getting answers. Um, I think, so I wasn't sure about all this stuff going on during the summer after we had set that up, but, um, regardless of that, I also pleased to take into account that, you know, some things you're looking for, there's not a canned report, you know what I mean, that puts this stuff together. Um, and so, um, Jean Speck, who's also here with me, um, at the Firehouse, and, um, Captain Dingy's also here. Um, but, um, you know, we go through a slow process, trying to put things together, and, in that case, because it's not like, um, saying, how many times were you at a specific address? That can be done relatively easily, um, and, and printed out. Um, so to your answer about fire calls, yes, there are fire calls, um, up at, at the High Watch facility, if you're specifically looking at that, um, at sixty-two, you know, Carter Road, and, um, we can easily run that, um, report and, and have that information. Um, you know, through our system and, most importantly, through LCD system, um, you know, as they work together. As far as if you wanna start getting into specific things about how many times was a, a paramedic sent. Um, there's a lot of details, they would, you know, the minutia, but the, the very details, are you asking how many times were they dispatched due to the EMD coding? Then when they, were they canceled, uh, by, um, you know, the responders on scene? Um, were they canceled by themselves after they did an evaluation? Um, were they transported, you know, with the patient? Um, so those are things that, you know, the, the records and data is there, but, um, to my knowledge, there's not a report that's easily put together uh, or, or printed out, I should say, and then that's where things are attempted to be put together over time, which is the report that, you know, we thought you were looking for, and that Jean from our technology, and who knows the, um, software well that we're using, um, you know, did. So when you look at the report that you have, for example, um, in twenty twenty-three, out of the total number of EMS calls that the Kent Volunteer Fire Department, um, had a request for service to, um, it was nineteen percent of that total call um, went, was at the High Watch facility. So that's an exa-, excuse me, an example of, and you look through, she was able to, um, document that out for each of the years. And remember, you have COVID in there, so overall, you see the call volume down, but you can look at the percentage as it goes into, um, for a single address that you were looking for, um, you know, what the percentage is of calls compared to the overall call volume. And, um, other things, you know, Marty, like you had mentioned several months ago, you know, I, I do know about, um, and Barbara about, like, Medic Four, you know, how that works and interacts and so forth, um, so, you know, Eric, um, you know, as treasurer, will be able to answer that more, and then we can, uh, he'll be at the, um, at the meeting, Marty, as you know, that we just finally got scheduled, um, you know, for, uh, the ninth. Um, so that way we can get into those, uh, you know, details, um, or whatever we can't get, that we can go back and decide. You know, if you want something put together, then we can work on, um, you know, how to put that together, and, you know, the, the, the time that it takes to put those things together.
Alan, at what point does a paramedic call get billed? Is it when he, when there is a transport? Or when an EMS call is billed? Maybe that's a better question.
Transport.
BLS, we, it is a tran-, it would be a transport, for ALS, it can be a, um.
For, for the, for the, the paramedic, um, it, and remember, we have two primary paramedic services that we deal with. The regional paramedic four, which the town signs a contract with, and then we have a separate agreement as backup for the Northern Duchess, uh, paramedic, uh, program, and they also, um, do geographically first call out High Watch, as you're asking for that, because of the location, how far it would take Medic Four out of the, um, the geographic area. Medic Four will still go, but, uh, the Northern Duchess medic is dispatched automatically on the, you know, on the call. Um, the Northern Duchess paramedic is a flat rate fee that the fire department pays, and that's if they touch the patient. Um, is my understanding, um, touch, transport, you know, as it, as it goes into that, that setup. If they're canceled while they're en route, then there's no, uh, uh, currently no cost associated, uh, to the fire department um, in that, that scenario. The, the paramedic four, um, situation, that's under the, there's the, uh, you know, billing system that the town pays for. Um, and my understanding with that, hold on, let me just double check with, with Jean.
So, the, everything is based on what the state allows a provider to charge. So again, under a lot of regulations, an ALS provider can charge for an assessment, which means they're dispatched based on the severity of the, or the acuity of the patient condition. They arrive on scene, they assess the patient in the back of our ambulance, or if they arrive before we've got the patient in the ambulance, they will assess the patient, because they've been requested based on that patient acuity. And if they, um, decide with the crew that this patient, their, their acuity has changed, maybe something has resolved that was happening when they first called nine-one-one, and they no longer need an ALS unit. They, the ALS unit paramedic can downgrade that, and so the patient would be charged for an ALS assessment, and there's a couple different levels, but it would be an ALS assessment and not a transport, because then that ALS, um, unit would go back into, um, go back into service, and the patient would be transported by the BLS ambulance, by Kent Volunteer Fire Department to the hospital.
And, and if I can just thank you, Jean, and just add into there that, again, as Jean was pointing out, this is all set and governed by regulation by the state, so we can't say, oh, for Kent, we wanna charge this rate, or do it this way or that way. There's very little, um, once we start billing, that we have, what I would say is control over, um, in, in that, that scenario. What, what, something that we do have control over is the ability to whether the BLS, the Kent Volunteer Fire Department ambulance, right, BLS only, because Lynn, you'd asked a little bit about BLS, whether we want to charge for the assessment, uh, point where it's no transport. And the Kent Volunteer Fire Department discussed that, um, a few years ago. I don't remember the exact, uh, um, time, but it, it certainly could be gotten if you needed it, and decided that we felt that since a, a large majority of those, not all, but a, a large, uh, number of those calls were for people that needed lift assistance, um, they were, you know, seniors that had medical alarms and other things, um, or somebody that was involved maybe in a motor vehicle accident that was okay, um, so they did not need to be transported. Um, that we felt that it was not, we, we didn't want to, uh, have them to have to be charged, uh, and pay for that, that part of the service. So those, the Kent Volunteer Fire Department on the BLS level does not charge for, um, the state gives us that option to make that, that decision, and that was the decision of the, of the, the department, of the members, um, had a vote to do that, or not do that, I should say, in charging. Now, when we talk about this other, like, some of the things that Jean was talking about is the, the, um, information is sent to a billing company. So we have a, a company that is, uh, licensed, proficient, and going through all these factors, um, to decide, like Jean was saying, the acuity level, what was done, what was here and so forth, based upon the report for that particular patient. Not location, um, but the patient, because at, at a location, it could be two, three, you know, four patients, you know, whatever, it'd be a different patient every time at a location, uh, y- you know, you can, I think, understand that, um, in, in the, the idea, um, of what, what could happen there, so it's based upon the patient.
So Alan, but you guys, okay, we understand the statutes, and Jean, I appreciate that, um, you know, what you have to operate under, because they're state statutes. It regulates what you can actually charge and what bill and, and how you, you actually, I guess, record your different responses. Um, but part of the issue is, we don't see the data of which each one of those situations are, how many were, how many were touched and transported? How many were, were a no, no call? I mean, th- those are the kind of things, and then the associated cost or charges to that, if it's, if you do charge in some instance for going to an accident and, but you're not transporting anybody, or because of this, you know, the time it's spent on site or whatever, or taking the ambulance out of other services to do that. Those are the kind of things I think we're trying to figure out exactly what, at least for the EMS side. Uh, it's all EMS side, pretty much, I guess, with, but the, the Medic Four and then the, the paramedic piece to it, but certainly on the EMS side. So we understand what is the, um, I don't mean to talk to everybody, generally, I think it's what we're trying to find, what is the stress on our manning, uh, you know, now that we have a, a company, a new company coming in, uh, you know, what is expected to cover that? What are the times that it's supposed to need to be covered? Um, you know, what are the charges that we have? What is the income that we've gotten in? What is the cost that have gone out? We know what we budgeted, but maybe that may not be the total cost, or maybe other costs associated. That's what we're trying to, I mean, in the overall, that's, at, at least, you know, our discussions back and forth, but trying to get to understanding those points and actually get that data, and I believe that's, that's what you were starting in, back in last spring, to understand how we were funding both at the paramedic level and then the EMS level, to understand exactly what the charges are, what has been the town's, you know, um, uh, I guess, portion of their, the return, which seemed to go down all the time, and, 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 uh, we didn't really have a complete understanding, we saw the data, a number, but, uh, I guess we just wanna make sure what's charged, and when we do permit, uh, the Medic Four and so on. And, uh, and what we get in response, so, you know, uh, what's your average, you know, things like, what is, is there such thing as an average ambulance call, uh, you know, do, when you do charge somebody to take, to transport them, is there an average amount? Uh, we understand it's, it's based on, you know, different types of insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, I mean, all those are different levels of what you can charge, where you're limited to recover and so on, I think those are, we, we'd like to, to see that, some of that real data. And I think, because you do have, and, and part of that is, is what's billed and not paid, and what is unbilled, I mean, what has not been, but actually put in for whatever reason. Um, that kind of stuff, is there an issue with that? Are we, you know, and, and, and I think billing companies should be able to spit most of that out, I would think. Um, and that's just kind of how this stuff is facing.
And, and Marty, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I agree, um, completely, that again, is, it, it's good to, um, be transparent, you know, I mean, what, what, as we're working as a, as a team for the citizens and the. be transparent, you know, I mean, what what, as we're working as a as a team for the citizens and the safety and the welfare of the, you know, of the town, of the citizens and the visitors and and everybody that's here. So this way, we can work, you know, like we had talked back in June, you know, at the, at, when we met briefly upstairs, you know, and then said we would be following, you know, with the meeting, you know, September, you know, when the fall after summer was over. So we can get through this and find out. And then if we have to, let's say, write a report, you know what I mean, so that we can print it, then we have it, you know, that way it can be done regularly going forward, so that we could monitor and see. And to have a good understanding of, like you said, is, just just to give an example, right? Is a hundred thousand dollars billed, but yet only eighty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars collected? And is that because of insurances, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, just like you were saying, right? So you've got a a good idea of this. So and to have real data with that, I think would be, you know, very, very helpful for everybody to get a a good understanding of it. Just because it says that a a an ambulance call would bill out at, and and I think Jean included that. So you have some of that in your packet, right, of what an ambulance call should bill out at? But then what you actually get, you know, you know, paid for is is a whole different, you know, ballgame. And I just, you know, I just want to.
Right. So for instance, we are, and when you look at the second chart in that email, that is the billing, the rates, it's really important to think of it as those are the maximum allowable rates. So that's the maximum that we can charge for a BLS transport is nine hundred and sixty dollars. I I would say a single digit percentage of the time we are actually reimbursed at that rate. And again, like I wrote in the that report, for a Medicaid patient, where we have to take two hundred dollars for that call. That costs us the same, you know, a motor vehicle call, response costs us the same for a Medicaid patient as it does for a Medicare patient, as it does for a commercial ambulance patient, as it does for a hundred percent private pay patient. So, and those by federal law, Medicare, we have to take the the contracted agreed upon rate that we're paid, which is nothing near nine hundred and sixty dollars. And by federal law, we cannot go after anybody for more than is federally allowable. So there's, there's a, you know, a a write off that that happens as a part of doing business as an EMS organization, whether you're a commercial, private, volunteer, fire base, doesn't make any difference. Part of doing business as an EMS organization are those allowable contractual allowable write offs that we by law cannot chase anybody for. And we also have one of the the very few pieces of flexibility that we have in the regulatory process of billing is that we have to bill every patient, but we don't have to send every patient to collection. So we, as an organization, many years ago, when we went to become a billing organization, we created a policy that said for any patient that we care for and transport, that we will not send them collection to collection. So they'll get three bills from our billing company and then that gets written off so that we're not taxing our own community members unreasonably. And it was, again, an organizational decision.
Jean, I I appreciate that. You explained the textbook classroom information on that, but we were looking for the specifics. We can, actually, so how many did you bill and what did you get, you know, the actual numbers you got back? So, well, this is good and this is nice background information. I think we really need to to move to the next phase, which is actually the specifics of what you're billing. I mean, you know, so, you know, if you're billing, this is what you bill that, this is what you received. This is what we haven't billed for whatever reason, because whatever, and there could be reasons for it, I'm sure. And then what is that, what's the implication of that? Do we, your bills that don't get billed fall off because of certain time limit that you can't bill anymore after? If you don't do something and you don't pay for it in time and, you know, it just goes away, you know, as we go away, do we eat that, you know, has had a percentage or things like that? Those are some of the things I think we need to know. This is, in my mind, anyway, as we got into the hundreds of thousands of dollars of town, the business of town supporting the business of EMS. That's a piece that we really need to look at, is the business, are we, are we funding it the right way? Are we managing it the right way? I know we, in the past, the town has just been funding. And and the KBFV and the EMS have been managing. You know, I I'm thinking maybe it's time we we look to the future as we move from, you know, the volunteer, wonderful volunteers we have. I mean, you couldn't be prouder of the of the men and women that 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 suit up, whether it's in in an ambulance or a fire truck. As we said that, and and the response to the swift order was was really remarkable. But there's a business side to it, too, and we need to make sure that we're prepared for it, not just to look back at what, you know, did or didn't happen, but to say, how healthy are we? How are we doing? Where are we going in the future? And the town has a stake in that, so the town needs to. And we're, we're, the town step up and say, okay, what can we do to get a better business model? Look at the inevitability of what paid, we do hybrid right now, right? We do paid and volunteer, where we we know where we're going, and we can pretend we don't, but we do. And how do we best get there? And how can we look to the future and make sure we're all together? So then you can perform the functions that are necessary for your great work as our volunteers or as our paid. But also how the town can, you know, best position ourselves, be able to to recognize where we're going funding wise, business wise. So that's, in a nutshell, how how I look at it, and I think we kind of beat that a little bit on the board.
I I mean, I I have a lot of appreciation for how hard it is for volunteers to do this kind of work, collecting this data and in getting it for us. I mean, I understand how much, how that is not built into your day to day operations. And so I do appreciate that. But I do, I agree with Marty in that we're getting to the point now where so much money is going out. We've got to get more information coming in to be able to have a better handle on, you know, how much money you guys are really bringing in, because that is the opaque part. We don't understand how much money you guys are bringing in. And we certainly, for since twenty-two, apparently, we haven't even known how much we should be giving us to repay for Medic Four or Paramedic Four services. So, but I do, I do understand how it's not easy.
So appreciate it. Glenn, any comments? I think we'll continue, I think, next week or meet, whatever. You you want us to finish up, Alan?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say that, again, and Marty, it sounds like you and I are echoing the conversation we've had a couple of times, right? That we want to make sure that the the model that we're doing, right, let's call it a model, is the best for for us financially and and emergency response wise, you know what I mean, for the citizens of of Kent? That we're getting the the biggest and the best that that we can get for the the cost involved, that, you know, collectively, it's it's done. And so, you know, that's where, I I I agree, it it needs to be looked at all the way through. So this and and done, and I think Barbara, as I recall, you know, it was it was back in June. You know, she said, well, look, let's let's revamp what was or relook at in detail what was done so we don't have to redo things and then find out if that is still good to, you know, continue to go forward. I don't want to put words in her mouth, but you know, something like that. And and so as we sit down to review this and find out just the model alone, right? And and having that specific data will help identify that.
Right, yeah, agree. And I I want to publicly apologize, my, I'm impressed you did give us a medic four that we didn't, I didn't forward it to you guys. My brain's just wide, but that was, that was on me, anyway, because you said it to Barbara and I think we passed along.
And and Marty on that too, right? I mean, the Medic Four, the way it's set up, that was from an old time, as I remember, I I haven't seen the agreement in a long, long time, you know. And and John Russell is our president, you know, he's had a family commitment, so he was able to be here tonight. And, you know, Eric is the treasurer and and so forth. And, you know, Bonnie as as EMS chief are, you know, the key players in in all of this. But, you know, I wanted to be here as as chief of the department and and so forth. And, you know, to say that, you know, the Medic Four thing, I think that's something that, you know, how that reimbursement works or doesn't work, you know what I mean? Really needs to be looked at because, you know, it 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 just, it's a, it's a factor in there, right? You know, that that should go in because you're paying out on another side of things. So it it the whole process is very good to look at and see.
I think the word unpaid is a great word, but we gotta fix, it shouldn't be, but it is right now. So, okay, I want to thank you and Jean and and Dungy for Sean for showing up tonight and I appreciate that. Any other questions or any other things you'd like to add to this? Get the data.
Yeah, I mean, I I think there's, from what you just said, it sort of spurred other things for me, so I think I need to.
But like, yeah, please, anything you want to forward, we can, again, bring to, we'll see what Jen for what we can do when we sit down, uh, tonight. At the meeting five thirty, we said.
Yeah, and and.
Is that just with you?
It was just with me, so we didn't, we didn't, just so we can have the discussion, only because.
Okay.
And and Marty, just in my, Marty and for the board, you know, Len and Glenn, it in my mind, there is no way it's a one and done meeting. This is an ongoing thing that we need to do and keep going, just so we're all clear with this. You know, this is is, you know, this way we have the feedback, we can look at this, again, see what we want, look at how it's going to get, how's the best way, most efficient way to get the data, you know, how it can be done, get it done. You know, how are we going to do it timely? Well, is there a cost involved? What is that cost? You know, what what's the best way to do that and then continue on? And also, you know, looking at the at the model, you know what I mean? So I see this as a as a continual partnership, you know, as as we move forward.
Sounds good.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I just think that there's the income part.
I agree, no, I agree. No, I agree. Jean laid out all the specifics, you know, like you said, the classroom structure, what they want to allow. Appreciate the background and and the acronym descriptions, but we need the actual data now that, you know, comes from that, so.
Like a percentage of like how many people are Medicaid in Kent? How many of those calls?
Exactly.
How many of those four hundred and fifty-one calls are Medicaid calls? So it's like, that's kind of an important information, if that's the lowest amount of money you're going to get.
If it's increasing for whatever reason, you know, as our population increases. You're getting, you're grabbing. You're continuing. And as soon as you have any questions, that's the rest here in the next meeting.
Yeah, I definitely understand, you need to, like, have a free and open conversation that must there.
Make sure it has information, of course, you know. Okay, all right, next is a traffic logic update. And this is something we just had today, so I didn't even get into everything. I did hand out a handout that was given to you noon today by our president Raymond of the Dagger Tech. Now, we talked before about the actual cameras themselves and we've done numerous data collection pieces with the traffic data collectors that we had around town to look at. Part of the whole idea of moving towards an idea of of what we want to do with speed cameras, if that's what we want to do. And it's still a question that will go to the town, in a town meeting. But in preparation for that and preparation for what the state requires, we have to look at allocation of approximately a lot of money to to ask for the board, because it's not in our in our budget if we want to do it this year. So it's back to that. Dig up my information. So what I did get was was dug up the the numbers that was asked before regarding cameras and and then a little bit more explanations, which we will get when we are ready to talk to Dagger Tech about. Once a picture is taken, once a camera, it, you know, texts a a vehicle at excessive speed and so on, what happens and how that goes into actually producing a ticket and and, you know, how it's handled and all that. And the cost is laid out on that sheet, there's a whole process that they do. And we've had, we had a meeting with Eric, with like, excuse me, Rick, over at Joyce, resident trooper Vicky, and myself with the Dagger Tech guys to go over the process and so on. It was pretty well understood, it's fairly straightforward. But so what I really want to talk about tonight is is how do we go forward to a board finding? Do we want to go and request or give or give a cost statement to start the process going? The only cost right now, direct cost, is the cameras, actually purchasing cameras. Along with that comes installation, usage, updates, and and everything else. And what we have to do in conjunction, I just say, like, hooking it up to a power source. We could do, there are some suggestions for solar cameras, but they don't work consistently. They don't give the the, what am I trying to, acuity of the of the take, of the, the license plate and so on. The power is always going to be a little less with a, so, especially if it works at night or is it, you know, the power is set to wait before it gets back to daylight. So the real recommendation is a a camera with a with a charge from a pole or something. So and and that's the the cost that, you know, I present here with the twenty thousand nine sixty-three per camera. So.
We have some solar and some, I mean, how many cameras are you talking about, Bonnie?
Really, we get two at this point, and and only invested two so that we can get both. And we can move, they can be moved, and there are ways to move them, even if it's permanent, but they're not. The ones that they they recommend are on basically like a moveable trailer where the power source is associated to trailer, whether it's a battery source, whatever, like you see in traffic where they move a a a light or a or a sign around, that's kind of this traffic logics that the camera people have. We don't want that, we don't want that, you know, in a way, we want permanent structures. It's much better than acuity of the of the image itself. And I think a better processing system to go through and collecting the data. And collecting the data, meaning the the picture of the camera that is triggered at the speed that's in violation that we adopt in our, is what violation it's being, when we do as a base, ten, eleven, state right now has ten, others have gone ten, eleven, twelve, in that range. We can, we can do that, we can, yeah, we can mix and adjust the data once we we do the work. I do have a draft in the north, I've been talking to Jim Britton, the first applicant over at Washington, who's way ahead of his schedule. He's about ready to go to the state final approval, which there's a whole process of that, and I think we've experienced it before. So anyway, I would thought no more than two cameras at this point. The other cost associated with processing comes from actually the tickets themselves. But but there's a a breakdown that is eleven dollars per citation, six dollars per way, it's fifty dollars per ticket is what we are limited by by the state. So there's other costs now, some of these costs are associated, three ninety-five plus five dollars ninety-five. That's charged on the credit card for the front end, if you process it through a a web service where you you pay the fine. There is a mailing services, so on, those costs are, they're charged up to fifteen dollars, I think, initial to the fine. So you get a fine for fifty dollars, you get a fifteen dollar service charge that covers other costs. It doesn't come into town, it actually covers the cost of the company that processes the the actual data, the data systems. The data systems collects the data, what's brought in is automatically sent to them. They do a a list, the server kind of kind for license plates that they're authorized to look at. They're certified, they go through a a whole certification program when they come into our town. Everything camera wise, everything else is all certified, the process is all certified and and checked out by the state, part of state process. So that if somebody contested and said, well, the camera wasn't cor, you know, was corroborated or, you know, or your system worked, didn't work right or something, we can actually show that that's not the case. That's the, there's finally a reason that I don't, we don't want to care for contesting, but that's kind of not why. We'll, we'll, we'll give that information as we go. But all these other costs for enforcement system quotes, we call it, is generated by the actual fees of the of the tickets off, so we don't put any money out for that. They do have, like any company to be able to get their services, they ask for a two thousand dollar monthly charge in about forty-five minutes, one Friday afternoon, standing out on Main Street, hanging fifteen, fifty dollar tickets. I mean, just came by trucks, a couple of people gunning it, some people just, but, you know, trying to get to dinner.
You're just sitting there watching.
Just sitting there, yeah, just going, just, you know, with a basic, you know, idea of of being, she had somebody pacing at twenty-five and then others, but you, so you have, you're going to feel for all pace. So, I mean, and and we do have the data, we have, so we had the data system for for you, for weeks now. So we do have that data and and we had a recalibrated, first it was calibrated nineteen miles an hour and then the Canadian thing, I think, is conversion to hundred. But anyway, a lot of this has actually been developed and worked and tested in Canada, it's working. Terminal, but we did have to go back to our thirty-five mile an hour speed limit in town. And and so we have all that data as well, and if you want to look at the raw data, you can. And we'll have that available for anybody to look at.
So wouldn't be like in the twenty-five zone, it would be in the thirty-five zone?
It would mostly probably be on the main street in in the town. It can be used out in, say, three forty-one, Secret Mountain. We've had some folks, Andy also was talking about the motorcyclists, could be moved out there. Again, but as a stationary camera, it would take a lot more, and we have to get the power off a pole. Um again, but as a stationary camera, it would take a lot more, and we have to get the power off a pole or something. There are ways that resource will will bring in a a little power source, but again, it's it's uh that's a little costly, and I don't know what that is yet. Uh we have to figure out exactly where we place them and 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 the height usually is above ten to twelve feet up, so it's not, so we could get up and. Looking whether it are hidden or something.
So you're thinking one on north of town and one south of town?
That would be probably an initial look, yeah, so initial look at it. Um and then we can look at moving one and another time to say three forty-one coming over the bridge, because there's people that speed up that way. Walking, riding bike after those, that's true. Um it's only, and we can, and those are the ones we have to go to the state for approval, because it's a state for hours. The other ones, if we did Elizabeth Street, you know, at school at some point, or we decided to do Lane Street, or or maybe Street extension or something, those are ones that we have in flexibility. I mean, that's where we're gonna move it here, but we have the our capability within our ordinance to make that move. Okay, so um that's it, so.
Okay, my my other question is, um, do we, with our bidding ordinance, or do we need to have more than one company? Uh I mean, you've only really.
Right, there are very few companies that have gone through their the the whole certification program for Connecticut.
Okay.
Uh that's part of what we're looking at, why it's been uh approved uh. Allowed by the state to go just to these two companies, they've worked together, they've been certified. Um the chief supplies, I said, I went to Middlefield, real talk, excuse me, but through all states uh both approve them. Because they have to prove that to operate in the in the state, so um we could try to go to a longer and find there, there's more companies in Canada. That the R N S is actually do this, um we'd have to find those, or Ohio, Illinois, and they haven't come back east yet. Um these two companies, Dagger Tech and and Traffic Logic saw the, um actually, we're we're consulting as part of the the ordinance. With state statute, so they had a step up on, I I think, most everyone else, um their costs are. By all review, the same, similar, or or a little less uh front uh than others, um their minimum two thousand is. Very small amount, meaning with, um we had um uh Greg O'Callaghan from who, what um from. Who's not, make sure everybody knows, he's not looking at cameras right now, but he was just hearing the information. But again, he has a D M S responding, so when he understands what the, some of the others, but the speeders that's going on, and he thinks that, again, that's a minimal amount. And so is Jim Preston in this area, uh and there are three that are going, I actually, Washington's. Um has been looked at, Washington's capability in their ordinance or the else, what they're doing, it's been looked at by Stanford and Greenwich and others. We're doing the same thing, so we're kind of a little bit cutting edge on this, because we've really started looking at this like last fall, right? We brought you a personal thing this summer. Anyway, so yeah, we 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 could, we could weigh that um to to actually get this in, uh because of its its. Um again, track record, we had the capability in the state, I think we could do that to to move it forward. Um to, I have, again, like looking at things like noise, the noise ordinance piece, still have half on any companies. Um that have just specifically talked about doing a noise ordinance, camera, whatever, or reflection in Connecticut, so it's there in the books, but. You know, there's.
Technology and caught it.
We have a wide art here between using, and and our records of wide art, we use use wider to really identify the license plate. Having looked at a couple of the the test pictures, it's licensed, but you can't tell if there's ten people or no one in that car. Not even driving this car, but um but it's, you know, there's. What these companies have done and what I've seen and what it's talked about, that they have every possible conceivable. Um issue and and question that Ms. Valleys have come up with and stay has come up with, and they've used this as a the mail mailman tool. For how, for game should, um so so far, um yeah. Again, I wouldn't, you know, that's the the part that we're looking for, we would, we would have. Uh a collaborative relationship with, that would be actually responsive, and so far, they've been more than responsive, we haven't put a big one yet, so I know that you're hoping, you know, obviously get that. So, um so the big thing is is, you know, we talked about that, and I said I would not go to, look at going to a board of finance until we've had. We're getting that where it's a point where we got it outlined and worked, uh we got some ideas of what we'd like to do, of all the data that we need to collect that state requires. Um we need to decide, is we as a board, like, oh, look to go forward and make that request, because it's gonna have to be an unfunded. Uh request from the, you know, our album and funding funds, it's not, or we could. And and we're ready to answer any questions, I would have more information, obviously, and the companies would be standing by to answer questions as well. Or meaning uh for a.
The environmental one, it means wants it to be a solar camera. So, I mean, I really wanna, I heard, I heard what you said about the.
We can look at one or each, we can look at.
I just. Had to be solar with a battery backup.
Well, that's that comes with the the beach uh trailer and moving that around and getting that off the roads, or doesn't it? Again, these are, well, they're unobtrusive up off the road, there's signs that have to be put out, obviously, we can't, you know, we have to let people know that it's speed cameras. And use this town in this area before that they come across, we can't put it like after, put a camera up on the twenty, put it down, it's lost count. Oh, hey, you missed it, but yeah, thank you for the kind of reason, can't do that, um but, you know, in in uh ordinances and the information. Public relations thing we put out, so um potentially down down where it's it's more open down itself. Would be more probably accessible for that trailer, uh we're almost sure the curb's coming into town, coming up from camera, I'm not sure.
Although that's state property, so.
Yeah, exactly, right, well, that's, and and that's, we have to agree, you know, state, so, um but, yeah, where we would uh, where we have to decide, we can. I'm not, I guess, I just, I know that the power and capability of the band would be better. See this winter and summer coming out, I just don't know, they they said that's a very good solar program, but not against the six-hour, but that's kind of. Sometimes that's just way better than that, um but if you wanna do that.
So what is um, what is Washington projecting that they're, it's that they're gonna bring in, are they, do they know that?
I don't think they're actually projecting, that's in in so, yeah, to manage that, we're not gonna bring in eighty thousand dollar money. And there are limits to what and all that money can be used for, transportation upgrades, security, safety upgrades of. Transportation areas, roads and so on, everything's gotta go back into the road, it can't go back in general fund, it has to be kept separate. And which is good, because we could always use a couple of others to go work on the roads, right? Uh that's always been an issue, but uh and and some of those things, uh you know, would be significant if we were to actually. Generate that kind of, hopefully, I mean, we'd love to be generated nothing, we end up put, you know, rolling this up and eating a couple thousand dollars because people of. You know. But I have a feeling that as many visitors we get, people rushing back and forth, and 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 things like emergency management, uh or um. Uh emergency responders, yeah, somebody in their private car rushing to the firehouse, that would be, you know. That's a part of the review process by the resident trooper, uh we would know, we'd have certain um. Official vehicle, anything you can hear, license plates, that would, you know, make sure that's never got. Uh so there's, that's all part of of the deal, Dagger Tech is very good with that, that's what I did uh appreciate. Uh their ability to identify and and but that didn't play right off the bat, so if there's something that comes up, you're not gonna have to, you know, relook at. Same responder coming down out of North Cat into into town, whipping down, you know, jump on a fire truck or to a. You know, there's things that they can do that uh to do, so um it, yeah, um like I said, the the recommendation was to go with fixed uh. Pixel or fixed power camera, but if. Yeah, look at it, we can look at. I don't know if there's, you know. I can ask a, I mean, I can ask a question if it doesn't work out for some reason, whenever, can we trade it in and get something else? I mean, I'll ask those questions. And uh.
And what's the, what's the quality degradation?
I think mostly, and it's like, if you were to use a screwdriver or something electric after a while, it just doesn't work. But these are are better, they do have a better capability and they do have a backup capability, I don't know. I don't think, they don't have a, they switch from solar to like, they have a generator. System would be solar powered, and then if it wanes down, it moves forward to, I mean, kind of, but, you know, I don't think that they have that sound, they. That I understood, they explained why they they decided to have two different camera costs. Um but we can ask, you know, more specific cameras, I did, there were more questions about. What we could do if solar didn't work out for us here for whatever reason, um you know, change that to the winter time, uh things like that. Again, the ability to move cameras around, we could always, you know, put the fixed one down, we just had to make sure we could hook in whatever source, whatever power we have, which. And there's ways to do that, it's like a light pole kind of deal, they have a light setup system, so.
And so do you wanna go um in October to the board of finances?
Yeah, I'd like to do that. Because we we need to, we need to look at the the funding, we need to put that together, and that goes. Part parcel towards the ordinance, towards the state requirement and so on, so it's a process that probably when you get there, that's probably till the person here. By the time we even get the company to come in and 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 survey the sites and work with public works, we're, you know. If we do.
At what point in the process do you go to town meeting right before?
Absolutely.
For the ordinance, so?
Um with the ordinance, yeah, we would, you know, we would get the ordinance, and that would be, I'd bring that in October to to you all here, because I think we have it. And with, you know, if we get the approval, then we get the ordinance, if the. Or if I says no wait till next year for uh budget season, putting the budget, I mean, they always say that, right? Then, you know, then the rush to get an ordinance done, so we can get the state approval and take it to town, so the the ordinance in the town before we go to state. Make sure I get that right, so, the state before people in town on it, so uh we're having any chance of voice.
So, would you have it just like um? Uh just a town meeting, uh or would you?
We didn't have information, no, we don't have an information session down at town.
Same day?
No, we're trying to do two weeks, so it's, we have to have it two weeks.
Is that, there are some people that are not convinced.
Oh, no kidding. But there are a couple, actually, I said, there's a, there's a tough character that I've heard from seriously, that we actually had more than ten minutes to talk. And sat over the door of a car and had talked and. Person said, oh, maybe there's use for it in town, maybe I can see why it would be okay in town. You know, and which again, would go towards the North Canada, South Canada, South, um you know, putting it on a hillside somewhere, maybe they wouldn't like that, but, you know. Uh looking, at least for the validity of that, we do have speeders, we do have people visiting that don't buy violent speed on. As much as we'd like to have more crosswalks, we can't have any more crosswalks. People don't always obey the crosswalks, and so when you're speeding down, um you know, there's there's issues all the time, and if you're not getting people's attention by. In- increased, um you know, resident trooper uh patrols or or other troopers, you know, uh patrol one or whatever. Um can't do it twenty-four seven with policing, uh this is a tool to use, and uh and we can control that tool. Yeah, and everybody's, you know, they can put on what they like, so I think, you know, like, so they had, they thought, okay, yeah, let's see how it goes in. In a year or two, we, you know, like, if you, you know, decide we. We've outgrown it or whatever, we can move on, I think we need at least, yeah, two years to get our money out of the war team. Always do that, you turn the trade interest before you have to pay for your talk. So, um.
So, so the most of the cost would be. Um forty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-six, if we got this all.
Yeah, get the update on the exact, in case anything has changed with the interest rate change or, you know, with the, with.
And then, do we have to include this information?
No, because that's, if that's the most, that's what, you you know, that will be just that, we will, you know, we'll, when we get to the ordinance, we'll. We have to, that's what I had, and I sent Randy a note out before he wanted to. Do we have to designate that? I didn't remember seeing that in the ordinance, but I got to go back and look at what um Washington, Washington pretty pretty aggressive in. In in putting their orders together, like I said, people really, really liked the ordinance, other towns.
I mean, Ken was the victim.
It's two, it's up, they have two.
No, they have state growth as well.
I think one of them, uh one on nine, I think, and I don't know, we're not gonna do that. I think it was, was on nine, it's one, coming in to Washington, I'm not sure if it's forty-five going out or or whatever. Forty-seven, sorry, yeah, forty-seven, right, forty-five. I get sixty-three and sixty-seven on the big guy there, you know, Dryberry one day and then up in Camden the next time, I'm sure. Are they doing solar? Not gonna worry, yeah, yeah, that's.
So what do you feel about that?
No, we could have information, but, you know, they do it solar or. I do, I mean, you know, I I I do too, so, but um. You know, maybe they work, they don't, I mean, I think, you know. Yeah, I can see if I can uh get any information that. We'll have that information, but great to see. That's why I said one of, one of each. But uh see how that work, uh you know, maybe one is better than the other, maybe solar is just fine. We can have the discussion and and, you know, with the board of finance, and see what they say. Yeah, that's for sure, yeah, you know, because I think they kind of downplayed it, they didn't give us any more information, you just had a total of product solar. Like, kind of, maybe we thought more about that. Sure. Or, and there was a woman that was from Canada outside Toronto that was actively involved in all that, and she got all one of it there.
Are you saying the solar wouldn't be pulled out of it?
Uh it would pull, it would be on a trail, right now, it's on a trailer, since that's something.
I don't understand that, that's like, it's like either or.
Right, yeah, you you could try to put, you could try to put a a a phone out, but what they have done to have a battery, any kind of battery backup or. Or or solar, doing a battery would have to be on that trail.
Oh, yeah, I don't understand that, maybe.
That would, yeah, that would be, you know, yeah, trying to get a a a power source, but it wouldn't be able to generate where you can switch. One to the other, it would just be solar or battery back, or battery collected, solar, it wouldn't be direct, because that wouldn't work, that that has to be somewhere, I could figure it out, that wasn't it, it's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a picture, I'll give you a picture of the trails.
Okay, so you need a motion?
I think so, I think the motion could.
So, um, we're just in called.
But um would be.
Automated speed enforcement? All right, so um, I make a motion that the town of Kent start the process of automated speed enforcement. And purchase, or do we recommend this? Recommend to the board of finance if we purchase two cameras, I think, see fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Hopefully, that'll be the money, but yeah, we can do that, we can. Second, okay, all right, any more discussion? Uh, all okay. The update, make sure that the data that the cost is. Okay, um, thank you, that's good, um. Okay, resident trooper reports, you guys all saw that. And she um just, uh if you had her, she will be on on vacation during Halloween. Uh we talked about looking for, um she is working um to get overtime covered and it's gonna be hers with the problem. She told me this morning, we met that uh she had. You know, a few other troopers are very interested in that before, like, who's from the New Milford area, comes up here quite a bit, he's a guy who's like, we've never seen. Um and others who would be willing to come up and for Halloween time, uh you know, for touring the roads and stuff like that, when the kids are out. And also areas of pumpkin, right, and um uh we have a chamber. Had contacted her, she had heard from that, they said, no, we're months ago, I think I told you that earlier, but um, yeah, they're now making everything contact. To make sure that whatever requirements they need, she understands and she, but we can. Um there was, uh she did, it wasn't her specifically, but the state troopers, and I wanna give a kudos to them. For the uh oil, the cooking well, caper, that was a K P G, I've heard about that. Yeah, cooking old keeper, that was Monday morning, early, I got a call early, uh patrol one was down, doing what. What we had asked him to do, kind of, to the night to the. Or any activity going on, there were some issues with the signs, and so they said, sure, we, you know, adjust our time period, you come two different times, just to see. And what they did is they discovered people out behind the computer card, providing cooking well, which can be turned into.
A goal, like stealing?
Like stealing, yeah, yeah. Using my disorders tonight, but yeah, they were picking up a cooking well, um about three hundred gallons or three hundred or gallons. But this is, but whatever, which can equate to a couple hundred dollars, and it can be used for biodiesel, and or it can be used for heating and so on, so it's, you know, that's recoverable. And in the meantime, um there was an indication that's. Yeah, well, you know, um when you turn it oil like when I do to my, you know, mechanic oven. On the Maple Street, uh they use that to keep their, their building to clear, you know, so you get a lot of oil changes over there, I guess. Okay. But um, yeah, and they're they're clean and burned, it's all, I guess EPA takes a lot of heat, looks at it and makes sure it's approved, but it.
Where's the call, do they, where they?
This is early morning, like, early in the morning, three, wow, yeah, so, yeah. So they do come down, I mean, they people, they do, but also, uh there was an occasion that um somebody was monkeying around the backside of the pharmacy. It was not an actual break-in, but. Seeing individuals and so on, um so that's been turned over to investigators and to Trubell. We did the, it was not Vicky, so it's not her case to do, but she she's followed that, so as well, so no one locally uh identified, so. But anyway, but again, thank you for for our troopers and our troopers that that do show up and, you know, most of up two times and and help. We don't have a lot of reported crime, you know, we do have, do some things that go out. You know, so that can be quite prominent, I think, it says, but um we're lucky not to have. I don't have a motion, but we're pretty good, that's not allowed by, right, you know, ordinance of no crime, I think. Um, yeah, uh what else, let's see, um, I think from. I think from.
Let me go first, uh, just, you know, Swift Task, Task Force Mets, um, on nine, uh, what, four, uh, September eleventh. I had a bunch of questions there, what's the next steps in the process, who's responsible, what's the role of Swift House Task Force? Forward, what about the chief of staff? I think we talked about that extensively, so I don't think we need to talk anymore. Uh, the only thing I want to say is, um, I want to thank, uh, all members of the Swift House Task Force. It has been nearly three years. Since I have been on this thing, um, Zan Charity has been the heart and the soul of this, uh, of this group, uh, thank you, Marge Smith and Mattson. Uh, and I know this group, uh, predates me, so there are other people on the Swift House Task Force performing, Chris Gary. Uh, and perhaps others, so, uh, so, so these folks and others have been thinking about this for a very long time and, uh, and I want to thank everyone. Uh, for all, all of your effort, uh, and support and, um, and thanks YouTube for, uh, for being patient and thinking about all this. Uh, so clearly we're, we've got some homework, uh, and, and I have homework. Uh, I would just like to see this, the, the Swift House beyond the agenda moving forward and. Update you and, and whether it's former members of the task force or anyone else out there in the public, uh, would like to kind of talk about the Swift House. If you have any ideas, please, uh, continue the conversation because. Things are still moving, although slowly. So, so thank you for. All.
Pretty nice.
Um, yeah, so. The broadband committee is, is twugging along, um. We, I actually got to go to a webinar today, um. And the best part about it was there was this woman from East Haddon who was complaining.
Oh, really?
About, about working with the state.
Okay.
And I was like, so I get off the call and I send. I, I look her up and send an email and like the chairman, not her, the chairman called me, like within minutes, somebody's sending this email. We had a great chat, but they have an interesting. They have an interesting thing that they're trying to do. They're actually trying to get like fiber. Optic, uh, fiber optic options. And they.
Oh, right now.
That, yeah, like you get to choose what your fiber optic provider is gonna be almost promised pretty well. And I was.
Good, like more sensitive than anything else, actually. It's like a public utility, which they've never gotten.
Exactly, and the municipality is just the provider, they're not actually, you, you know, they're just making it available. So I was like, wow, this is pretty cool, but they were very bummed because they went through the process of Connecticut. And the state denied them. And I was like, wow. So anyway, that was, so that was interesting, but they are. They are talking about a second round beat. I don't know if that's gonna help us at all, but, um. The thing that the group does want to do is have a regional meeting with some of the people that we've talked to. And solicited information from. And, um. So, um. We're trying to, we're trying to make sure we got all our balls in order and we know exactly what our meeting is gonna. The goal of the meeting is, so once we get that, then we're gonna send out the proposal. It might even, I can tell you about it and then maybe you can tell COG or something.
Sure.
Or selectmen, I know a lot of people that we talked to were not the first electmen. Um, the first one kind of directed us to other people in their town that were.
Yeah.
Um, but the one thing I did want to bring out is, um, we do want to move forward with this communications plan and we didn't have anybody that responded. To the newsletter saying they wanted to help us, so, yeah, I mean, I might need to do this. Yeah, maybe do a separate one or something like that, um. But we would like to have a Facebook and an Instagram page, you know, account, so I don't know. Does the selectman have to approve that or?
Well, we don't have a social media policy.
Well, the conservation commission, there's other groups that started things up, so I don't know what you guys feel about that.
Again, if, if, if managed correctly, like, um, most a group, um, Facebook accounts are. Make sure that people understand what they can and can't do, put on their, so, and, and somebody reviews, whoever, um, who's in my team.
Probably gonna be me. I mean, I, I, I asked my members, if they're gonna wanna help, and there's like, oh. But I mean, we woke up more than a person, for sure.
What's the benefit of having your own page as, as opposed to putting it on the town page?
To promote, um, it's getting more eyes on things, you know. I would, I would wanna share everything, pretty much everything with town's page. And whatever's appropriate with the, the Facebook group.
I think the problem sometimes is though that if, if you have a page and then you share it to us and then the community page, you know, people, it's almost too much on their face sometimes. Because there's, and, and maybe we might disagree, but I mean, if I'm getting four posts on the same thing, you know, it may discourage me from wanting to see it. That many times, because you know, if you have a page and, and part of the policy is gonna be then you make sure you put it on the town page so that. You know, that information is shared and then the community page is gonna pick it up and then if any of your members or anybody else, you know, repost it or share it or whatever they do.
The problem with social media is, the, the real problem with social media is there's so much that goes through that. Ninety percent of what comes through, people don't see. I mean, you may think you're seeing things multiple times.
I know it.
But, I mean, maybe if you're an administrator, you are, but.
Darlene, you know, she has the perspective on some of that, especially trying to move Facebook and, and the town webpage. Um, see what she thinks about how to manage that, like, so we've been talking a little bit about trying to work a policy and, and. And how to handle things like independent pages or independent focus areas, say Facebook, I haven't done much on Facebook, we don't, I think we do Instagram. She just, I just.
I'm happy to, um.
I'm just thinking, um, cause she has been chewing on this for a while, she's chewing on me a while.
Yeah, but I just, I wondered what you guys think, cause this is, this board is the one that actually does broadband reports.
Oh, and I was really, everybody else is pushing, I just looked. Sorry, I'm a little tired, uh, so, no, but I, no, I, I, I don't, I, I mean, Facebook in the right. With the right kind of focus and right kind of management, it, it's fine, I mean, actually, it's a, it's another outlet, you know, I have no issue. But again, with that, oh, I just, you know, I know Darlene just had perspective on some of the concerns she had about how. You know, it can get gone or get, get lost or whatever in the town unless some of that she shared. But anyways.
Yeah, I understand.
I, I don't. I wish you two, if we have a policy, um, you know, yeah.
Correctly.
As, as a selectman, you know, and it, it, you'll be as a selectman, so it's not like you're just doing as, as, as an individual, so. Um, and you were better powered by the board here to work on broadband, so it's just a form for you to, I mean, that's how I'm.
Okay.
Unless there's, that's why I said Darlene, she'll have a different perspective, maybe a different, something to think about as you go along, but. Really ready letters.
Oh, the other thing that was interesting this month is that, um, you probably guys probably saw this, but Verizon wants to buy Frontier. And ever since then, Frontier doesn't wanna talk to us.
It was a bigger thing, and there's a lot of groups buying it.
So, and maybe, and who knows?
memory sources selling aquarium water.
Yeah.
And being looked upon by the Southern Connecticut. Water group, whatever, who. Was profit, like aquarium, memory source, but not proud, which means we can't charge. Well, we wouldn't be able to charge the tax, um, that we do, uh, aquarium, uh, water. Sheds that we have here, it's like four, three water sheds and then a water transportation, yes. Fifteen thousand a year, we get taxes. But they would say, and this is just, it, it's a perspective, they haven't actually been approved for sale or anything, but they're one of those suitors. And they wanted to sort out, what about a pilot, like we'll pay you a little tax. So unless they give us exactly what they would pay us in taxes, um, I'm not, I mean, here, it would not, it would. Yeah, be advantageous to us, I don't think, for, for them to buy up aquarium and, and then run it out of New York or Seattle or someplace like that.
Well, we're really not gonna have much to say in it.
No, we're not, exactly.
Isn't the legislature, didn't they talk about this, I think?
Yeah, they did, but it's one, and, and again, it's, it hasn't proved as deep or as to a few of the other, you can run out of others like this. But, but the other part is, for them, as a tax exempt, uh, profit, they don't have to go to peer, that would be the other thing, so rate increases and so on. That's the part that really got me, as long as, as we really looked into it and I went, well, yes, that, you know, we're not regulated. And, and we already paid a lot for water. Sorry.
Um, that's what, I think that was the, the biggie, so I, I mean, I included this stuff about parking wreck.
See, we do it well.
Yeah. And we didn't do anything about the changes of the bylaws.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, October's gonna be a fun one. Anyways, alright, mostly what you see, what we got, um. Streetscape, we're getting better, we have meeting next week, uh, the railroad crossing, that should help. Finalize what the, the, the state is gonna require, that, or the rail is wants to. Make the state require them to put in a, an arm down, which would be a whole, so that may increase the pace for it, should be part of us, we're gonna deal with that. Uh, next week, that'll be one of our discussions, that should clear some of the, the last remaining hurdles, we are doing all the easements. So hopefully.
How many easements are there?
There's four main easements, there's, uh, there are permanent easements, there's a bunch of construction easements. And stating in the middle, in the fence in the middle, change what your reimbursement rate is for. Both easements, which caused our lawyer to have to go back and resubmit permission to get, to actually do the easement to be our lawyer. He had to get approved by the state to be the lawyer, I, I mean, it was, yeah, it was, some are, now some are fun things with lawyers, uh, and easements. Probably had twenty emails back and forth, nothing, you know, but anyway, but we finally got it, probably got him approved, uh, he's, uh. Oh, no, it had been. Your crowd, I'm only guy. Anyway, he's Robert, he's, he's working on it, so. But tomorrow, just again, we're having the, the, uh, as part of like community thing, you know. R O B, uh, Richard voters, uh, Teresa Duncan is hosting the Secretary of State.
You told us that, that's exciting.
Yeah, and, and that was, yeah, it is, and, and so I'll give my one minute's deal of. Why, why my first election's relevant, but not the fourth, it's greater, knowing that he's from. The referendum, should there be a, a uniform in school or something, but it's a great, it's really gonna be a great process, so they're gonna, like, let's do that, that'll be fun, that'll be here tomorrow. Why that voting machines over there. Uh, the big theme of the cog, uh, in, in others, conservation, affordable housing, development, um, this group has been meeting, having meeting, you know, going to some of their meetings, most. I guess probably most of the meetings, few I missed, but it's all about the conservation and affordable housing. Kind of came out of what, um, Southbury Forest, I remember we went there last year, um, we had, unfortunately, they kind of dropped the economic development piece to it, which I really thought was a. A, a third leg of that stool, I mean, we need to have affordable housing, you need to have conservation, we all agree on that. We also need to look at the economic health of the community to support affordable housing and jobs and growth and, and small businesses and so on, so. I kind of hit the cog up, I'll wind up. Robert Phillips, the cog director, came by last Thursday and kind of hit this and spoke, Rista Malika, who does the economic development. She's the one that brought that group down here in early. September, October, um, to visit, um, in Long Main Street, they call Main Street, and to see how vibrant we were and what they can do with Main Street, we haven't seen a report yet, that's still in the works. But Rista is part of a statewide, that's called C D S, it's a community economic development assistance. Support room or something, um, it's kind of like CCS, where if you works with CCM down in, in, in Dayton. Uh, they, they work out their offices a little bit, or show their offices, but they do economic development, I just read it up before, uh, the meetings, I had some of their background on it. Um, it's small targeted, um, businesses, um, things that they could do to help the economic health of the community. And I think that that's P twelve, while we agree that if we can find, uh, you know, uh, land for affordable housing, that's great. We can find land to go in conservation, wonderful, I mean, we've got a park wreck, has picked up on that every park is. Blooming, blossoming, I know, things going out there, which I think is pretty good, um, um, but we still need to look at the economic job, so I'm gonna kind of try to. Focus a little bit more on that and allow our conservation commissions and, and land trusts and others to, to work some of this, we'll continue to, to, they've got some. Uh, I'm a little reluctant to bring their resolutions forward without having. Real economic piece to it, I mean, just, I don't, I don't, it's all, again, non-binding, as they say, but, um. I, you know, overall supportive, but part of the discussions, I keep bringing up, you know, we need affordable housing, housing is affordable. I mentioned, there's Margaret, you know, what can we do to do that? And it kind of, it's like, well, we don't have the bandwidth to talk about that now. I think it's the first one, I need to make sure we do have that bandwidth a little bit here, so we'll see what we get with the cog, if we get a bit more of that, you know. I think, um, you know, Josseliers are kind of the, who are the kind of key, don't keep on this. From, you know, have been from Canada and been kind of, and we have a very strong, um, certainly. Land trust, uh, program here, we do three thousand plus acres, we've got the MCLC, we've got state and federal easements, property, we've got. All kinds of things going on, anything that we've done so far has been towards expanding affordable housing, I'm really proud of what the board did with. That one point one five acre, trying to find a way to make it work for the town, um, so I think we're, we're there, uh, we always need to be aware of that. So anyway, that's the big thing, um, that's it, we, and time wise and all that stuff, there, I think we hit most of it, you know. Any questions?
I just, uh, thank you for the civic events, uh, you, Darlene and Therese, that was great, that was right in here. I had to leave, I'm sorry.
And, and it's, you know, a lot of people just don't really understand when they look at our website, exactly what that all does is the. Well, that's every departments and that many commissions and that many committees we have and vulnerable, and, and it goes back to, when people actually love, you know, I mean, there's.
Yeah, that was, that was really good, so thank you.
Sad, I can't come.
Okay, um. Alright, that's in for selectman reports, any comment, any public still left out there? Appreciate your patience, if you've been there, if you have any comments I don't discuss this evening, um, we're happy to recognize you. Okay. Now, thank you very much, we're now going to move to executive session to discuss judicial assistance, um. Make a motion to move that.
And then, so we're talking about personnel.
Correct, we're talking about personnel, specific, eight thirty-six. To, to executive session to invite also, um. Management assistant, Joyce, and also assessor, anyway. All favor. Um, the board of selection, the board of selection report out of executive session at tw- twenty fifty-two. And we're now at regular session. Okay, um. We're gonna make the motion, we make a motion that we hire Amanda Gallagher. Uh, for the position of assessor's assistant at a salary of twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per hour to start as soon as possible. Second. Any discussion? Make all favor. Thank you, thank you, thank you, um, the next step on is jury. If I can push it, jury.
If, if we hire, if we hire, I think it'd be really cool if we did like just a little notice. Here's a new, new employee, you know, she is, you know, where she's from. That'd be awesome.
And now, I started, yeah, okay, all favors, pass.